I'll call a meeting to order in accordance with nine forty C M R twenty nine point ten, remote participation adopted by Great Lowell Technical School Committee on April seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, and pursuant to the Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law in our general laws, section, chapter thirty, A, section eighteen, and the Governor's March fifteen to twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Great Lowell School Committee is being conducted via remote participation by the following members: Kenton Gigi, Fred Bahu, Lee Gettria, Curtis Lemay, George O'Hair, Matthew Sheehan, George A. Tassius, and Paul Moran. The following members are individuals are present: interim Jill Davis, interim Assistant Superintendent Michael Barton, and the Business Manager Michael Knight. I will now ask for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. For liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Gettria? Mr. Gettria?
I think he's having some trouble logging in.
Okay. Mr. Sheehan?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. O'Hair?
Here.
Mr. Tassius?
Here.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes, by phone.
Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Mr. Moran?
Yeah.
This meeting, this meeting is being recorded. Public appearance. We are going to suspend the public appearance motion portioned in going right into the meeting. Uh, school committee communications, I don't believe there are any report of student representative. Uh, I believe there is none. I need approval of the minutes. Uh, needed motion to approve the minutes from me for what special meeting? Second by someone?
Second.
Who is the, who is the motion by?
I, I made a motion. I don't, George O'Hair.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Gettria? Please start. Mr. Sheehan?
Yeah.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tassius?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the minutes from the April sixteenth meeting.
So moved. I'll second it.
Okay. So, is it Mr. Gigi that did the motion?
I, I seconded it. I think, um, George O'Hair is up.
Up. Okay. So, Mr. Gettria?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tassius?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Report of the treasurer. Motion to leave the reading.
So moved. I'll second it.
Mr. Gettria?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tassius?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
It's okay. Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the expenditures of the amount of four million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and eleven cents. Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Yes, no, just O'Hair.
Okay. Mr. Gettria?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tassius?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Uh, report to General Counsel. There's none tonight. I'll turn the meeting over to the superintendent.
Okay. I, the first item on the agenda, I'd like to invite the interim Assistant Superintendent Principal, Mr. Mike Barton, to recognize our top ten students of the class of two thousand and twenty. Up, up to introduce them.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, good evening. So, before I begin, I'd like to just express that it's my pleasure to introduce to everyone the top ten students. Before I begin, I think it's appropriate to recognize their families, parents, mom, dad, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles, grandparents, that all contributed to their success. So, they, they've done a tremendous job and we're thankful that you chose Great Lowell Technical High School. And this is our way of recognizing them, given the circumstances. So, I'll begin with the tenth ranked student in the class of two thousand and twenty, Grace Lamontaine. Grace Lamontaine is the daughter of Bridgette and Edward Lamontaine of Lowell. Grace is ranked tenth in the class of two thousand and twenty. Grace's technical program of study is hospitality management. She has maintained a rigorous course of studies which include honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement courses. Grace participates in our cooperative education program and was employed by Cracker Barrel. Grace's school and volunteer activities include being a member of the National Technical Honor Society and volunteering with the Saint Francis Life Teen Catholic Group. Grace is also the recipient of numerous scholarships and awards. Among them are John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, High Honor Roll Certificates, High Honor Roll Certificate, Science Fair Award, third place in the physics section, Outstanding Achievement Award in Hospitality, Special Recognition in Physics College Prep, Special Recognition in Geometry College Prep, first place in Environmental Science Section of the Science Fair, and the Outstanding Achievement Dual Enrollment Literature Award. Grace plans to attend Framingham State University to pursue a degree in hospitality and tourism management. Of her future plans, Grace states, "My plans for the future are a bit fuzzy, but I know I want to do something great. I know I want to make people smile. I plan on attending and graduating from college within four years. During this time, I want to explore the hospitality industry and really decide what direction I want to take my life in, whether this may be opening my own business, enjoying the tourism industry, or something completely different. I do have a passion for writing and plan on possibly publishing some of my work during my years in and after college. The hospitality program at the school has taught me so much, not just about the industry, but about myself and my passions. I will take what I have learned and do something of recognition that I can take humble pride in." The tenth ranked student in the class of two thousand and twenty, Grace Lamontaine. Congratulations to Grace. Our ninth ranked.
Congratulations, Grace.
Our ninth ranked student is Anthony Villa. Anthony Villa is the son of Sokum Chan of Lowell. Anthony is ranked ninth grade in the class of two thousand and twenty. Anthony's technical program is programming and web development. Anthony has maintained a rigorous course of study which includes honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement classes. Anthony currently participates in our cooperative education program and is employed by IBM. Anthony's school and community activities include varsity volleyball, Skills USA, and is a volunteer at the Boys and Girls Club. Anthony is the recipient of the following scholarships and awards: the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, the Boys and Girls Club of Great Lowell Youth of the Year Award, Volleyball MVP, Student of the Month, and he received a Skills USA Web Design Bronze Medal at the state level. Anthony plans to attend University of Massachusetts Lowell, majoring in computer science. His future plans include becoming a programmer and working as a freelance web designer. Anthony states, "I want to work in the community and give back in whatever way I can. If you want to help those around you grow, you must first learn to grow yourself so may, so you may teach others to do the same." The ninth ranked student in the class of two thousand and twenty, Anthony Villa. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations, especially for all that hard work.
Definitely. Kayla Knopp is the eighth ranked student of the class of two thousand and twenty. Kayla Knopp is the daughter of Sokin Prake of Lowell. Kayla is ranked eighth in the class of two thousand and twenty. Kayla's technical program is engineering technology. She has maintained a rigorous course of study which includes honors classes, dual enrollment classes, and advanced placement courses. Kayla participates in our cooperative education program, is employed by Omni, where she works with engineers and machinists to create dental, medical, and aerospace components that meet A Q L standards. Kayla's school and community activities include being a member of the National Technical Honor Society, the National Honor Society. She has participated in the cancer walk, the Bay State Marathon, the Hallo's E five K Run. She's been a college and career night volunteer and also a volunteer at the Great Lowell Tech Craft Fair. Kayla is the recipient of the following scholarships and awards: the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, the Outstanding Achievement Award in Engineering, her Special Recognition in Honors Biology, she's been on the High Honor Roll, Honor Roll, and she has had perfect attendance. Kayla plans to attend Middlesex Community College before transferring to the University of Massachusetts Lowell. She hopes to pursue a degree in biomedical engineering. Kayla is the eighth ranked student in the class of two thousand and twenty. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kayla.
Congratulations.
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 Nicholas Toledo is the seventh ranked class, seventh ranked student in the class of two thousand and twenty. Nicholas Toledo is the son of Josani and Sandro Toledo of Lowell. He is ranked seventh in the class of two thousand and twenty. Nicholas's technical program of study is electronics technology. He has maintained a rigorous course of study which includes honors and advanced placement courses. Nicholas participates in our cooperative education program. He is currently employed by B A E Systems, where he works on partial manual assembly of modules that would be installed in United States Air Force jets. Nicholas's school and volunteer activities include the National Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society, Skills USA, is a member of the Great Lowell Technical High School Indoor Track Team, as well as the Track and Field Team. He is a volunteer member of Christian Fellowship at Boston Church's Media Team. Nicholas is the recipient of the following scholarships and awards: the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, he's a Skills USA Bronze Medalist, and he has been a member of the Great Lowell Technical High School High Honor Roll. Nicholas plans to attend Wentworth Institute of Technology, where he has been awarded the Merit Scholarship and the Early Action Scholarship. Nicholas plans to pursue a degree in electrical engineering, and his future plans include becoming a successful engineer, hopefully working at big companies like Tesla or Microsoft. I also plan to have a family where, with my job, I will be able to support them in their every need. Congratulations to Nicholas, the seventh ranked student in the class of two thousand and twenty.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Our next student is Delaney Griffin. Delaney Griffin is the daughter of Judith and Tim Griffin of Tinsboro. Delaney is the ranked sixth in the class of two thousand and twenty. Delaney's technical program is medical laboratory and assisting. She has maintained a rigorous course of study which includes honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement courses. Delaney has participated as a volunteer in Go Red for, for the Go Red for Women campaign and has received the following scholarships and awards: the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, the Outstanding Achievement in Medical Assisting Award, as well as the Outstanding Achievement in Anatomy and Physiology, and the Governor Citation. Delaney plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell, where she will pursue a degree in nursing. Delaney states that her future plans include, "Using my passion and dedication for education to make positive changes, I want to see the world by prioritizing empathy, compassion, and acceptance as a nurse." Delaney Griffin is the sixth ranked student in the class of two thousand and twenty. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Delaney.
Congratulations.
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 Good work.
Emma Rosino. Emma Rosino is the daughter of Lucille and Joseph Rosino of Drakett. Emma is ranked fifth in the class of two thousand and twenty. Emma's technical program is medical laboratory and assisting. She has maintained a rigorous course of study which includes honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement classes. Emma's, Emma's school and community activities include being a member of the National Technical Honor Society, the National Honor Society, member of the G L T H S basketball team and the G L T H softball team, as well as participating in varsity volleyball. Emma's community and volunteer activities include volunteering at the Drakett Food Pantry, Drakett Old, Drakett's Old Home Day, and assisting with the Red Cross Blood Drive. Emma is the recipient of the following scholarships and awards: the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, the Massachusetts Women and Athletics Distinguished Service Award, High Honors and Honors Achievements, Perfect Attendance, Algebra One Honors Achievement Award, Scholar-Athlete Award, Basketball Junior Varsity Coaches Award, the Teen Health Award, Varsity Basketball Coaches Award, the Founder's Merit, Merit Scholarship from Riviera College University, Regional Academic Achievement Award for University of Massachusetts at Lowell, the Presidential Scholarship Award from Plymouth State University, and the Director's Scholarship from the University of New Hampshire. Emma plans on attending the University of New Hampshire to pursue a degree in nursing. Her future plans involve pursuing an advanced degree and medical school after that. Congratulations to Emma Rosino, the fifth ranked student in the class of two thousand and twenty.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Emma.
Congratulations, everybody.
Um, our next student is Rosina Narey, daughter of Nay Ray and Ta, Ta May of Lowell. Rosina Narey is the, is ranked fourth in the class of two thousand and twenty. Rosina's technical program is medical laboratory and assisting. She has maintained a rigorous course of studies which includes honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement courses. Rosina participates in our cooperative education program and is currently employed as a pharmacy technician-trainee at Long Term Pharmacy Solutions. Rosina's school and community activities include the, being a member of the National Technical Honor Society, Skills USA, she's been a G L T H peer tutor, she's been also a G L T H peer mentor, a member and volunteer of the Say Danai, sorry, the Say Danar Community, Lowell Folk Festival volunteer, the Duville Senior Care Center Walkathon, and she's participated in the Hallo's E Fun Five K Fun Run. Rosina is the recipient of the following awards and scholarships: the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, the Grade Nine Most Valuable Player for the Great Lowell Technical High School Tennis Team, she's been a second place recipient in the G L T S, T H S Skills USA competition, and she's received a U S Skills USA Bronze Medal in the District Competition. Rosina plans to attend Middlesex Community College. Rosina Narey is our fourth ranked student in the class of two thousand and twenty. Congratulations to Rosina.
Congratulations, Rosina.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Saktina Var. Saktina Var is the daughter of Sofali Sangvar and Yin Sim of Lowell. Saktina is ranked number three in the class of two thousand and twenty. Saktina's technical program is medical laboratory and assisting. She has maintained a rigorous course of study which include honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement classes. Saktina is a member of the G L T H S peer tutoring, she's been a member, she is a member of the National Technical Honor Society, and she has been a participant in Skills USA. Saktina's community and volunteer activities include participating in the Duville Senior Care Center Walkathon, Hallo's E Fun Run Five K, and the Lowell City of Lights Parade. Saktina is the recipient of the following scholarships and awards: John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, Skills USA First Place Medical Math In-House Competition, Skills USA Second Place Medical Math District Competition, and she's received the two thousand and nineteen Mass Award for Academic Excellence. Saktina plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell, majoring in Applied Biomedical Science. She hopes to someday pursue a career in clinical, in a clinical research lab. Congratulations to Saktina Var, the third ranked student in the class of two thousand and twenty.
Congratulations.
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 Now, I have the pleasure of introducing, introducing to all of us the salutatorian and valedictorian of the class of two thousand and twenty. Enrico Natoli the Fifth. Enrico Natoli the Fifth is the son of Sherry and Enrico Natoli the Fourth of Drakett. Enrico is ranked number two and is the salutatorian of the class of two thousand and twenty. Enrico's technical program is programming and web development, where he has earned multiple certifications. He has maintained a rigorous course of study which includes honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement classes. Enrico maintains a cooperative education position as a data and analytics tester at IBM. Enrico is a member of the National Technical Honor Society, of which he is the president, the Great Lowell Technical High School Soccer Team, the Swim and Dive Team, and the Track Team. He is also the, the student representative to the Great Lowell Technical High School School Committee. Enrico's community and volunteer activities include volunteering at the D A V Chapter Forty-Seven events, and developing and organizing and volunteering at Great Lowell Technical High School Smash Brother Tournament. Enrico is the recipient of many scholarships and awards, including the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, the Massachusetts Outstanding Vocational Student two thousand and twenty, the Dual Enrollment Chemistry Outstanding Achievement Award, the Honors Pre-Calculus Outstanding Achievement Award, the Massachusetts Superintendent Association Academic Excellence Award. He is, he has been the most valuable player for the varsity soccer offensive position, the varsity soccer homecoming offensive position, as well as the varsity soccer MVP in the year two thousand and nineteen. Enrico plans to pursue an undergraduate degree in computer science at the University of Massachusetts Lowell. His future plan is to pursue a career as a software engineer. The number two ranked student and the salutatorian of the class of two thousand and twenty, Enrico Natoli the Fifth. Congratulations to Enrico.
Congratulations, Enrico.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Enrico.
So now, it is my pleasure to introduce to all of us the valedictorian of the class of two thousand and twenty, Courtney Wilder. Courtney Wilder is the daughter of Kim and Scott Wilder of Drakett. Courtney is ranked number one as the valedictorian of the class of two thousand and twenty. Courtney's technical program is programming and web development, where she has earned multiple certifications. She has maintained a rigorous course of study which includes honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement courses. Courtney maintains a cooperative education position at IBM, where she will be continuing in the fall as a college intern. Courtney is a member of the National Technical Honor Society, the National Honor Society, Skills USA, as well as the Great Lowell Technical High School Tennis Team. Courtney's community and volunteer activities include the G L T H S Summer Service Learning Program, M S P C A at Nevens Farm in Methuen, the Merrimack Valley Food Bank, Katie's Closet, Bay State Marathon, and she has participated in End Sixty-Eight Hours of Hunger. Courtney is the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, the Massachusetts Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award, Special Recognition Award in World History, Outstanding Achievement in English Sophomore Year, Outstanding Achievement Award in Programming and Shop Junior Year, Student of the Month May two thousand and seventeen, Student of the Month in February of two thousand and twenty, as well as the M I A A Academic Excellence Team Award in Tennis. Courtney plans to pursue an undergraduate degree at the University of Massachusetts Lowell in computer science. Her plan is to become a software engineer. It's my pleasure to introduce to all of you the number one ranked student and valedictorian of the class of two thousand and twenty, Ms. Courtney Wilder.
Congratulations, Courtney.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Courtney.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Courtney.
Congratulations, Mr. Barton. Mr. Barton?
Yes. Yes.
Would you forward this information to the school committee?
Yes, I will be happy to.
The top ten and their order, and that would be great.
Yep, I definitely will.
Before we move forward to the next portion, I, I would just like to also extend my sincere congratulations to our top ten students. I want them to know how proud we are of their academic and technical achievements over these last four years, and they should be so very proud of their accomplishments. I'd also like to thank their families for their partnerships over the last four years and thank them for working together with us to, to support their children and their successes. So, congratulations to all of our top ten students this evening. Uh, now I would like.
Completely agree. They make us proud. Yes.
So proud, so proud. Uh, now I would like to ask Assistant Superintendent Principal, Mr. Mike Barton, to recognize our two thousand and twenty Cooperative Education Students of the Year.
So again, it's my pleasure to extend our appreciation to the families who trusted us in educating their children, and it's a wonderful opportunity to recognize these two students this evening. Our first student is Andrew Noguin. Andrew Noguin is the son of Maevun Noguin. He is a senior in the electrical program. Andrew started co-op in March of two thousand and nineteen at the Lowell Central Electric in Lowell Mass. He works on dissembling old light, lighting fixtures for proper recycling from LED lighting retrofit jobs, as well as assembling light fixtures in preparation for wiring, assisting in loading and unloading work trucks with materials for each morning and afternoon, and filling material orders for multiple jobs. No matter the task, Andrew never complains and always has a smile on his face, and a willingness to complete any task he's given to the best of his ability. Andrew's greatest strengths are his kindness and his willingness to help others in need. Congratulations to Andrew for being Great Lowell Technical High School's two thousand and twenty Cooperative Education Student of the Year.
Congratulations, Andrew.
Congratulations.
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 We have another student who is being recognized for the two thousand and twenty Cooperative Education Student of the Year, and that is Tanya Wu. Tanya Wu is the daughter of Tony Nuth. He is, she is a senior in the early childhood education program. Tanya started co-op in April of two thousand and nineteen at Little Sprouts in Lowell Mass. Tanya is a gifted early childhood teacher. Since starting at Little Sprouts, she has been able to connect with the children almost immediately. She's a mature employee and always looks to help wherever she is needed. The families appreciate the attention to detail she gives to every child. Her peers at Little Sprouts appreciate her dedication and her work ethic. Tanya certainly has a passion for working with infants. Congratulations to Tanya for being Great Lowell Technical High School's two thousand and twenty Cooperative Education Student of the Year.
Congratulations, Tanya.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. Again, I'd like to extend my congratulations to the two students and want them to know that we are proud of them and proud the way they represented our school as part of our cooperative education program. Cooperative education is an integral part of vocational education, and it's something that should be recognized, and these two students did an outstanding job on their cooperative jobs. So, we want to thank them and we want to congratulate them for being recognized by their employers and our, our school for their outstanding employability skills. Thank you.
Thank you again.
The next item on our, on our agenda, I'd like to inform you that Great Lowell Tech was recently awarded a grant for two thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars for high school voter registration and pre-registration to promote civic engagement through voter registration for high school students. A copy of this award letter was included in your packet, and I'd just like to take a moment to recognize our grant writer, Cheryl Bomo, for writing this grant for our students to, to promote civic engagement.
Great. Good work, Cheryl.
The next item on our agenda tonight is the approval of our two thousand and twenty-one school calendar. A copy of the calendar is included in your package, and I, I'd be looking for approval for this calendar this evening.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. Gettria?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tassius?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Uh, the next item on the agenda this evening is our athletic handbook and concussion head injury policy. Uh, I'd like to ask Mark White if he could join us to present the two thousand and twenty-one athletic handbook and concussion policy. Mark, are you on the line?
How you doing, Joe? I am, I'm here.
Great, Mark.
Staying quiet. Um, so, yep, um, in terms of, you want me to just talk about any changes to it, or?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Yeah. So, on the athletic handbook, it's literally just a date change. it's literally just a date change. So, there's really nothing to go over there other than that. And then, if you look at the concussion policy one, it was just a minor change in the wording under the requirement of physicals, who to turn it into. I added athletic trainer because I didn't notice before that it wasn't there, and Angie processes a great deal of those. And I also crossed out, used to say within twelve or thirteen months of the student's last physical examination, the rule through the MIA is thirteen months. So, I just struck out the twelve or, and so now it just went from twelve or thirteen months to just thirteen months, and that's for insurance purposes because a lot of people, insurance won't cover more than one physical in a twelve-month period, so that's why they do the thirteen. Yep, correct, and that's it.
So, I'd like to ask the committee for their approval, or does anyone have any questions for Mr. White?
I had a question, Committeeman Lemay, Mr. White.
How are you?
Thank you. This is something that you automatically go through every year or mandated by the state?
The head injury one is mandated by the state. So, that's one, we do review it every year, and it gets approved every year. But, yeah, we just, we kind of go through it. I'm not sure how that small, like, basically, you know, omission was on there for a while, but other than that, a lot of it is standardized state forms. Like, if you look at the back of it, the appendices and stuff, those are just standard state forms that we don't really adjust at all. And then, the school athletic handbook, that's something that we, it's not mandated by the state, but we put out as a school.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
So, can we have an approval for that, Mr. Chairman?
Motion to approve.
So, do the athletic handbook first?
Yes, please.
Motion to approve the student handbook. I'm sorry, motion to approve the athletic handbook.
Second, sir.
Second. I think we need two separate motions.
Yep, so we'll do the athletic handbook first. Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hea?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
We're looking next for the policies on head injuries and concussions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hea?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
The next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding a memorandum of agreement between Greater Lowell Technical High School Teachers Organization in regards to educator evaluation as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And I'm asking the committee to consider suspending the educator evaluation procedures for the 2019-2020 school year from March 15th on. This would mean that all educators would still earn a year of service towards their professional teaching status. Their rating reported would be the same rating received the 2018-2019 school year from their summative or formative evaluation, depending on which plan and year of the plan the instructor was on. And beginning the 2021 school year, all instructors would resume the same year of plan or type of plan that they were on for the 2020 school year. And anyone on an improvement plan, that plan would be paused and reviewed upon in the fall.
Motion to approve. Joe, this is something that the state has looked at and accepted, or is this just going statewide?
So, the state has given us no direct guidance on educator evaluations, but most of the school districts around the Commonwealth are making decisions to consider suspending the evaluations. Mr. Macaro, the school council, reviewed this memorandum of agreement, if that's what you're asking. But because of the COVID-19 and the difficulty and the change in the way we teach as a result of it, moving to remote learning, many of the guidelines in the current teacher evaluation procedures could not be followed due to the circumstances. So, many schools around the Commonwealth are suspending their educator evaluation system as I am asking for you to consider this evening.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
Yeah, this is Kempson. Is there any downside to delaying the evaluations?
Well-
And I know you're not expecting the question or anything like that, but is there any detriment to delaying it? Is there any prejudice to the school or to the-
To delaying it, well, there's a lot of steps that occur. There's certain timelines for certain parts of the evaluation. There's certain documentation that needs to be collected. Documentation by teachers collected, documentation by their supervisors collected, that is somewhat impossible in the current circumstances.
And by us not collecting it, are we prejudiced in any way if there is a disciplinary issue or anything down the road?
So, no, we're just really taking, we're free, it's really you're suspending it this year and moving it forward. So, anyone on an improvement plan, as I just said, would be, it would be paused and then reviewed again in the fall.
So, essentially, all we're doing is staying anything that's happening for the period of the COVID-
Correct.
Situation.
Correct, Kempson.
Okay. Thank you.
We are going to be able to do it in the fall.
Most likely. I don't have any further questions.
I think we would-
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Approve.
Mr. O'Hea?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
The next item on the agenda, I'll be seeking approval for us to participate in school choice. This is something that we do every year. This is something that is outlined in our admissions policy as Greater Lowell Technical High School participating in. So, I am looking for your approval to submit our participation in school choice for the 2021 school year.
Motion to accept.
Joe, one question.
Sure.
Let me ask you, I'm not sure if you have any further questions. How many students have you taken for school choice this past year?
So, for school choice this year, we took in nine, twelve ninth graders and three tenth graders. A total of fifteen students.
Now, we have a long waiting list. Let me just ask, why are we taking in school choice students? I know we vote annually to accept school choice. I'm just curious what their criteria is that they are able to-
So, we would, the waiting list would be a priority, Mr. Bahu.
Waiting list is a priority?
The waiting list of in-district students would be a priority over school choice students, yes.
Right, so I guess my only, my question is, is if we have a waiting list and we're taking in other students that have school choice, how do they, how are they able to be accepted when other ones are not being accepted? Is it all based on that whole grading system or their-
It's based on our, it's based on our admissions policy, which is the admissions criteria.
Okay, so it's based on our admissions policy. Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Motion to approve.
Just one. How is transportation supplied for out-of-district students?
They have to provide their own transportation to get here.
Oh, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Move. Second.
Who is the approved first motion by?
Lemay.
Thank you. Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
I abstain.
Mr. O'Hea?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
So, just to add to the conversation, this is part of our admissions policy. As a school board, you can make a decision to remove school choice from our school policy, saying that we will not participate in school choice, and then we would have to resubmit our admissions policy to the state for approval to remove it. But right now, it is part of our admissions policy that we will accept school choice students.
Joe, wait, hold on, let me back up. I just need to clarify something. So, out-of-district kids, we have a waiting list. Do we exhaust the waiting list before we go to the out-of-district kids?
Yes.
That waiting list, so used this year. Say we have a hundred deep on a waiting list, fake number. We have to exhaust that hundred before an out-of-district kid gets in?
Yes.
Regard, I mean, if someone's on the waiting list that has fifteen absences and the waiting list, the out-of-district kid has zero absences, who gets in, hypothetically speaking?
The in-district student.
Okay, all right, that's, I just wanted to make sure. I want to make sure an out-of-district kid does not get in before an in-district kid that's on a waiting list. That's all.
No.
So, last year, we exhausted it and still took nine, nine out-of-district, or ten out-of-district freshmen and three tenth graders. That's how I understood what you said earlier.
Yes, it was, let me just look here. And it was three ninth graders and twelve tenth graders. Sorry.
Okay, so the ninth grade list was exhausted, and we took the other three.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I guess I'm going to ask for clarification as well. Apparently, Lee said, I guess I'm going to sort of become redundant. So, based on what I'm hearing, as far as a ninth grade waiting list, we have zero students on that waiting list, and then we accept school choice students. Is that correct? I find that hard to believe.
You find that hard to believe?
We have nobody on the, yeah, I do because we have, because I know we were taking in 1,200 applications, and I know that we're accepting 660 students or 750 students and about 150 denying getting approved.
I, yes, Mr. Bahu, and sometimes when students get moved to the waiting list and as the year proceeds and there's a spot that opens up, there are times that they're settled where they are and choose not to come to Greater Lowell Technical High School.
Sure, and I understand that. I'm just curious, are we backfilling? Because I know we're denying students as well, correct? So, we send out, we have 1200 applications.
Are you talking about this school year? Or are you talking about in previous years?
Previous years will be fine. This past year would be a perfect example.
And your question is?
We have, we basically accept 750 students. About 150 students make different plans and choose to go to other school districts. Of the 400 students or so that we do not accept, do we then try to backfill within our district so that we can accommodate everybody in our district? Or at that point, do we go to school choice?
So, the in-district is first before school choice?
And I understand that. So, we're accepting a certain number of students.
And you know what, Mr. Bahu, it might be best that we have Mrs. Martinez come to the next meeting with more data. I wasn't prepared to speak about statistics.
Yeah, I'm sorry I even raised the question, sure.
No, it's fine that you raised the question, but I think it would be best to have the director of enrollment and admissions here to speak to your questions in regards to waiting list and school choice.
Okay, I think that's a great answer. We'll have it here next month.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you. The next item, any other questions in regards to school choice?
Nope.
Okay.
I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion. Please, this has been already voted on. I thought we already get it.
Yeah, we've already voted on.
Okay.
Okay, so moving forward, the final item on the agenda is the discussion regarding budget and cost savings that was requested at the last school committee meeting. So, I'd like to ask Mike Knight to come and join myself as we talk a little bit about where we are with the FY21 budget and where we are with cost savings. So, I'd just like to begin by saying that overall, we are definitely speculating a 1/12 budget process for July and August. This is due to the Senate and House budget process delays, and we're sort of speculating that they will be delayed until later in the summer. So, we're preparing to act on a 1/12 budget. And this means that we are only spending 1/12 of the FY20 $46 million budget during the months of July and August or until we have an authorized FY21 budget, hoping by September. We are also speculating a $5 to $6 billion shortfall for the state, roughly a 20% decrease. We're waiting for some more guidance on that in order to present to you a revised FY21 budget, which we expect won't occur until late July. So, I can talk a little bit about how myself and Mr. Knight have been planning these last several weeks to respond to that and sort of be proactive. We're sort of planning three scenarios. Well, one scenario would be the budget that was presented to you, I think that was in April or March, I'm sorry, the budget that was presented to you in March. We also have been meeting with the clustered chairs to develop a level-funded budget, which would mean eliminating the SOA funds that we presented to you in March, which would be a 2.3% reduction, would be a 2.3% reduction, and it would be eliminating 1.158,446 million from the budget. We're working to prioritize student learning, and using some of the FY20 monies from cost savings to support our FY21 budget, purchasing what we can now for supplies and materials and equipment, in order to prepare for the 2021 school year, until we get more information. So that would be the level funded budget, and then the, the middle of the road budget would be removing the SOA money, which would be the 1.15 million, and a 2.3% reduction. So we've been working to prepare a budget that would meet all three scenarios if presented, when presented, we will be able to respond. We're also thinking about the FY21 will definitely be a different type of a school year, if school reopens, what we'll need in regards to resources, PPE, gloves, sanitizers, increased transportation, modifications for distancing, and all those things that we might need to respond to reopening. We're also thinking about what we will need to continue and remain remote, or doing a combination of both, and what that would mean. As far as cost savings, uh, do you, we, we estimated by savings with substitutes, utilities, intramural coaching, spring coaching, officials fees, transportation for athletics, Skills USA, detention monitors, early morning and afternoon monitors, lifeguard duties, and IT print savings, we estimated a cost savings of $557,841, uh, of cost savings during this COVID process, that we have to, to use by the end of this school year, in order to meet net school spending. So with that said, we've been meeting, trying to offset some of the things that we prioritized in our FY21 budget, that we can buy now with these cost savings funds. We're also speculating that we will receive some money, here it is, some money from the CARES Act, about $587,000 from the CARES Act, and we are gonna opt to, uh, say, not take the money, you have two choices with this, you can either take the money in June or opt to take it in September, we're gonna opt to take it in September, and sort of use that throughout the course of the 21 school year, as well, to support us as we expect a budget, a decrease in our originally proposed budget. And that's where we are currently in regards to the FY21 budget.
So, Jill, in regards to the PPE, I, I know right now there's grants out there for hospitals to try to acquire some of that, are we looking to do a grant, or looking for grants to acquire PPE for the school year of our 21?
Sure.
Will we be looking?
I think Mike Knight is gonna respond to that.
Yep, so, most recently, what we've heard from the school business community, in my calls with the Associate Commissioner of Education and Finance, is that they're currently the statewide initiative to produce a statewide contract for the purchase of PPE, such as masks, sanitizer, things you're probably thinking of that will be additional needs for us, and securing the supply that would go along with that. So we're waiting on that, but in conjunction to that, myself and Ms. Davis have also registered for FEMA and MEMA support, which is available currently for PPE and other associated costs with the COVID-19 shutdown. So in being registered for that, we're tracking expenses that could potentially be reimbursable from that, and I guess preparing that and submitting it simultaneously while looking towards next year, but also trying to get, or take advantage of what might be in place currently for those, what we anticipate to be needs into the next year that we might not have been thinking about previous to March.
So there's a lot of sort of anticipatory thinking. Cause there's, there's been no direct guidelines, so everything is anticipatory. You're anticipating a sort of, a possible return to school, you're anticipating a possible not return to school, you're anticipating a possible hybrid of a combination of remote and returning, and you're, you're thinking about what you need to, to, to ensure any one of those scenarios, cause there has been no direct guideline right now to where we're going with education. I will be-
So just briefly, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, regarding sources of potential opportunities under the CARES Act, or the PPP, or any one of those, is there a list, or a grouping of what may be available to schools? Does Massey put one out, is State put one out, so that we have an exhaustive list, so that we can make sure we're not missing any opportunity there?
So-
It does seem awful confusing sometimes.
So, uh, right now, Mr. Gigi, there is no list, a direct list of sort of items that we need, there is no direct directive or guideline, uh, quite yet, from the Commissioner of Education in regards to what school is going to look like. So that's why when I say anticipatory, you're sort of, you, you sort of need to be anticipatory, because if you wait until a directive or some guidelines are, are, are given, it could be too late.
And I, I will say from-
Yeah, no, and that's what I'm kind of looking for, to see if there's a checklist, like, can we collect money from FEMA, or can we collect money from the state and, and the federal government, and what sources of revenues, is there any one consensus or one consolidated source? I sense there may not be.
No, no, I'm sorry.
And I know that it can be overwhelming, and even I'm having difficulty.
No, there's not one source, that would be great, but there is not one.
And I think, I think part of that is that it's still coming to light. So while the CARES Act I provided us that $587,000, that Ms. Davis spoke of earlier, the CARES Act III and IV, I believe, which are the most recent two, also appropriated money specifically to education. However, that hasn't been filtered through the state to determine if that's gonna be a backfill to funding, if that's gonna be additional opportunities available, or how that money will actually come out. But I will say, we do have a pretty strong communication channel at the moment. The Department of Ed is updating their website daily with information as it comes out, and I think that we're probably on a call with the Department of Education-
At least once a week.
At least once, sometime, most weeks twice, a week, and these are just the, the tip of the iceberg of the items we've discussed and tried to work together on, but they're, the communication lines have been strong, at least from the Department of Education, even if they're not definitive, because the plan's all still coming together, at least they are keeping us abreast of what has been determined and what is on the table at the moment for us to take advantage of.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Joe, relative to your mention of waiting to the month of September to recoup some of the money versus attempting to secure it earlier, I, I have, I have found in the past that sometimes, whether this money's from the CARE Act or wherever, um, the funds sometimes get exhausted, and unless they're reauthorized by Congress, in this particular case, I think the adage of you snooze, you lose, we, we could be on the losing end, I'm not sure. What was your rationale, so to speak, for waiting till September once again?
I'm gonna let Mike speak.
Yeah, so, what, what happens is, this is awarded as a federal grant, so as you said, it, it was defined, the amount that we would be receiving, so I don't believe that there is any risk in waiting. We do have to submit our application by July 1st, even though we're not gonna be using the funds until the FY21 in school year, but in use, in-
It's a matter of using, is when we're opting to use it.
And strategically, there's a, I think a benefit in our scenario where we did, where we did have cost savings in FY21, and we're not in a very, I wouldn't say we're in a dire strait, that we had expenses that we couldn't afford, or we didn't have to lay off workers or anything like that, we weren't in necessarily dire straits in the FY21 year. By taking the funds in, or, sorry, the FY20 year, by taking the funds in FY21-
It's a 27-month carryover.
So as, as this progresses, and as we understand what's going to occur, or what changes need to be made when school opens, or if something occurs and school opens, but then we have to pivot and make a different change, it's nice to have this as a, I guess, sort of a back pocket or a reserve for those changes, or those unforeseen things right now, that we might incur come fall, winter of next year.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the, the criteria and everything else was in order, if, if that's, uh, that's fine. No further questions?
Keith.
And I just wanna thank, you know, Mike and Joe for the work that you did on this.
I know it's a progress in motion, where there really are no definitive answers, and that's why the anticipatory factor is so, is so large, but just anything that you could go to the school committee with is definitely much appreciated, so thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. And that, that concludes my agenda for the evening, and I'd like to ask Mr. Knight to come forward to speak.
All right.
In regards to-
So the first item on the School Business Administrators Report for the evening is the closeout of the Mass School Building Authority project for the renovation of the Greater Lowell Technical High School. At the April meeting of the Mass School Building Authority Board of Directors, our project's final closeout was voted, and you know, we brought this to the table, I believe, back in December or January, that we had been going over the audit, the final audit, and had some questions about figures, and getting some things straightened out, and within that process, we actually were able to increase what the initial estimate of the grant award would be, by about $900,000, which made the final payment of the grant, or of the grant for the building project, increased it from about, I believe it was right around $800,000 to 1.577,618 million dollars. And this amount ties out to the estimates that you've been hearing for years now as the project closed, and as we were taking out short-term loans to get us through to the end of this project and the audit process, with a little bit of an additional funding from the project of about 77,618,000 dollars that will be returned to E and D for the district. So all in all, a great closeout to the project, met expectations, and it should get everything tied up very nicely when we pay off the loan in September.
Beautiful.
Yeah, I, I really wanna thank Mr. Knight and Mr. Byrne, who really worked hard to accomplish, accomplish this.
Good.
Thank you.
Mike, Mike, one question, with that going into E and D, what will that bring E and D to as far as our proposed budget this year, percentage-wise?
Um, so, that, that's only gonna increase us from about 1.65, or at about, we were certified at 1.65 million now, so that moves us up to about 1.7, which was, so, 1.65 was about 3.2%, I wanna say, off the top of my head, so I, I don't anticipate a huge bump, we're gonna be looking at 3.3, maybe 3.4, and then we are anticipating using 300,000 from excess and deficiency next school year in the budget, based on the approved budget in March, so that, it, it won't push us close to the limit by any means, it'll put us into a, what I think is a nice range, that mid 3s to 4% range, generally where I try to shoot with excess and deficiency.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
All right, the next item on my agenda is just a follow-up to last meeting, when we talked about the memorandum of understanding with the transportation provider, and then the request to return that to our member communities. So we have issued the fourth quarter assessment letters to all of our member communities with a reduction in their amount, based on the savings from the transportation renegotiation based on the COVID-19 shutdown. So if you looked at the spreadsheet that was provided in your meeting packet, all the way on the right-hand side, there's a column that talks about the reduction, this is the reduction amount that was passed along to all four of our member communities, proportionately based on the way that they are assessed for transportation, so the total reduction of about 154,000 dollars was spread out to all the communities proportionately as they pay for transportation, as requested by the school committee at the previous meeting.
Very good. Okay, Mike, what was the attorney's, or did we take the attorney's?
Attorney's fees, did you take the attorney's fees out?
Um, so it's, it's still an estimate, or a best estimate, so I did include them within there, or I didn't reduce by what I anticipate to be the total attorney's fees, but given that there was a number of districts working with the attorney, and I don't think the hours were crazy, based on our phone conversations that we had with the attorney and what we heard from him on meetings, I didn't anticipate a huge cost, but I did withhold a couple hundred dollars on that, just to represent, I think, if they put 10 to 20 hours into that negotiation, spread across the nine districts I think we had teamed up, we're probably only looking at our individual contribution to be an hour of attorney time, or I think he bills out at about 175.
Um, question from Committeeman Lemay, I, I was, I was under the impression that, I think there was a motion, I believe, by my colleague, Mr. Gitcher, when we, we passed the, the reduction of transportation money into minus, minus any attorney's fees, frither in that negotiations.
You did.
So, those fees should be deducted.
Sure, and, and I did, I did withhold $200 of my projected savings for attorney's fees.
So, 200, you're saying will be divided amongst the communities?
No, I, go ahead.
So my, my savings, so maybe I could phrase this a different way, my, my savings would have been $200,000 higher, if I had not included attorney's fees, but I took that off of the top before reducing assessments across the board.
Okay, I, I apologize.
No, no problem, just-
I just, I just, thank you.
And that concludes my report, if there are no more questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, can I just add something to the conversation, going back to school choice? Cause as I'm sitting here looking at my notes, I realized, and I'm wondering, I realized that there was an error in what I said, so I, I would like to correct my error, and maybe this would clarify everything. So when I said that we accepted nine, 12th graders and 10, and three 10th graders, I shouldn't have said accepted, there were 15 applicants, they were not accepted students.
Good.
Does that, does that make it clearer now? So that was-
So, I, I-
So that, there is a big difference, they were applicants, not accepted students.
Got you, so we don't have, so every one of our students essentially comes in from in district?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Great news, and we participate in school choice, with school choice, so that we can-
so that we can also have some of our students who may go to another district. Is that correct based on being overfilled or maybe they want to take a different type of course like a farming or an Essex Tech or something that you don't offer? Is that also part of the whole, it's a give and take. Is that correct, Ms. Davis?
No, it's, school choice would mean we would allow individuals from other districts. It wouldn't mean there's sort of camaraderie because we're school choice and allows our students to, to have a choice at other schools. Those other schools would have to participate in, in school choice.
Okay, so if they participate, our students can choose to go there or put in an application if they get accepted.
Yes, yes. So I, I apologize for my error as I was looking down. The word accepted was not there. It says 15 out-of-district applicants, not accepted students. So on average, we get about 10 to 15 school choice applicants a year.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Old business, new business. Committeeman, Committeeman Gigi has asked to conduct a discussion regarding the continuation with Jill Davis as the interim superintendent or offering Ms. Davis the full-time position going forward.
And the reason, yeah, the reason I asked that that happened is that due to the uncertainty in the COVID situation. And we do know that the interim superintendent, this Jill Davis, current situation expires on or about June 30th of 2020. We may have one more school committee meeting prior to the expiration of her agreement with the Greater Lowell Tech. And I think it's a fitting time to discuss that. And it kind of correlates and goes with the motion that I've requested that we suspend superintendent search due to the difficulty of proceeding with that search and getting together and actually having in-person interviews and so forth. And I wanted to defer that to the entire committee because we're a body of the hall and I feel that our best decisions are made together.
Sounds good to me.
And I'd like to open it up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, Chairman, if I could, you know, I'll start off. You know, I think that, you know, we are on an unprecedented time right now. And I think that, you know, for me, I think Ms. Davis has, you know, really stepped up to the plate. She's hit a home run, you know, every time she's been up to bat here, not only with dealing with COVID-19, but in her role as interim superintendent. And, you know, tonight, if I'm given the opportunity, I would make a motion to make interim superintendent, Mrs. Davis, the permanent superintendent of Greater Lowell Tech. That's all I have to say right now.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, we can't really make that motion, correct? I don't think we can. It's on for new business and open to discussion next week in, you know, our next meeting. But I do think, Matt expressed his opinion that, and I, and I would like to second the opinion. I do think that Ms. Davis and Mike Barton and the whole entire administration has handled this in a very professional manner without a whole lot of guidance. They brought on the online learning. And we don't know what the whole results will be for probably a year or two down the road. But they have dealt with an emergency situation in a very timely manner and brought it forward. I have not heard any negative regarding their efforts through the administration and/or themselves. And I just think with trying to conduct a search in these untrying times, it wasn't lending to the best accommodations and to assess a person's qualifications in person. It makes it very difficult for a search committee person's position, taking into consideration all the safety concerns that are required because we don't want anybody to get ill or be put in an unprecedented position due to the situation. And I just think that at this time, I would, I have a motion before to suspend the search that we can probably vote on at this time after discussion. And then we can see if somebody wants to second the, the motion. And then I would probably suggest that the next meeting, we can address whether or not we continue interim or with a permanent position. And we can do that by motion at that time.
Captain, I, I agree. I echo everything you said. I think Jill and the team have done a great job. I also want to say that the search committee did a great job considering what you guys are on the- It's not, it's not very easy doing it with the situation you guys were put in. I just want to thank you guys for putting in the time to do it. And I want to ask you, you know, Matt, your thoughts on Jill and the team doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so I guess that concludes-
Well, I would need a second to the motion to suspend.
I'll second the motion to suspend the search, the superintendent.
Okay. Mr. Gisir?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen? Mr. Sheen? Mr. Bahu?
Yes, he goes, yes.
Okay. Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes, and I want to thank all the members of the search committee because they do donate their time and they put a great deal of effort in the review and the process. And it wasn't an easy decision to suspend.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
And so that takes care of that. And we thought of these subcommittees. I would just like to say to the committee that the naming committee has had another meeting. And at the present time, we're at a summit. And we have not discussed any further as to naming anybody, anything after anybody and reviewing the, the policy and the procedures and the application. And that's where we're at at this time. And if that's okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A second.
I move.
Mr. Gisir?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.